Okay, thank you, Dustin. So at this time, I'm going to call the special call meeting teleconference of the Mayor Board of Alderman, April sixteenth of this year. The time is now four oh eight P M. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I ask that we pause for moments of silent prayer, so let us pause for silent prayer. Amen. Thank you. At this time, if Alderwoman Irving, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderwoman Irving. Next, we will have the roll call performed by the city clerk, Madam Clerk.
I am the mayor. Alderwoman Mathis? Here. Alderman Frazier?
Here.
Alderwoman Smith?
Here.
Alderwoman Irving?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
And Alderman Diller?
Here.
I'll present the mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we have a quorum. All members are present, so therefore, the item on this special call meeting is extending the election schedule. Attorney Latham?
Yes, sir. I had a telephone conference with a representative of the Attorney General's office yesterday evening, and we discussed this current schedule that's being proposed. And as y'all will recall, at our meeting on March twenty-fourth, our initial schedule was even going to extend out further than this particular schedule. It was going to be a primary in June, general in, I mean, the runoff in July, general in August was taken office September first, so this is a bit more restricted than that. The issue that was created, I guess, a meeting on Tuesday, the regular meeting, there was some discussion about this schedule being a special, I mean, a special election. This is not going to be a special election. It's just going to be a postponement of the original election schedule for the primaries, the runoff, and the general election. I discussed also with the representative about submitting a written opinion, and she said I could do that, but there's a backlog, and she said we probably wouldn't get a written opinion until late May or maybe June, so it would be too late, actually, to do any good. But she felt comfortable with us moving forward with the schedule, if that's what the board desires.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold up, Alderwoman. You have a question for the attorney?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
My question is, this is going to be a charter change, and whenever we had a charter change before, I think the last charter change we did was to change the election of the city clerk to an appointed city clerk. I'm asking, what are the legal ramifications of a charter change? Because our charter specifically states in the section under elections that our generals will take place, the first, I think it's the first Tuesday after, in June, I'm trying to read it now, "On the first Tuesday after the first Monday in June, and quadrannally thereafter, there shall be held by the qualified electors of the city at large a general election of a mayor of said city, city clerk and police justice. The mayor, city clerk, and police justice shall be bona fide residents of the city of Natchez. The six aldermen shall be bona fide residents of the city of Natchez, and a bona fide resident of the ward which he or she may be elected to represent. The aldermen should not run from the city at large, but only from the ward in which they reside and qualify as a candidate to represent, and the qualified electors shall vote for only one alderman, and shall vote only for the alderman in the ward in which they reside and in which they are qualified to vote as an elector." So I'm asking, because this is a charter change, and we did a charter change before, we had to take it to the, I know it, no state, Secretary of State's office, Attorney General, and then the governor had to sign it. I understand this, so what I'm asking is, this is a charter change. I know we are in a pandemic. What are the legalities here?
Actually, I don't consider this a charter change. The board would not be making an official change of the election schedule as a permanent thing. We're in a pandemic. It's obviously an unprecedented time. We have, the board has emergency powers, and I discussed this with the Attorney General's office. They're doing, there are other municipalities making these same changes, moving, and they're all charter, charter municipalities, so I don't think, I think in emergency situations, you've got the power to do it. You're doing it as a temporary matter strictly for this pandemic issue and the resulting effects on the health of the citizens of Natchez. I don't think any court would say that the city doesn't have the power to make these decisions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Smith. Dustin, will you put the agenda back up for me, please? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Yeah, section seven A, part one, it says something that makes me think that this could happen from time to time. It says, "All general and special elections shall be held at such places as the mayor and alderman may, from time to time, direct by ordinance or resolution duly adopted, published, and spread at large upon the minutes of the city." So in reading that, it kind of knows there might be some circumstances that there is another reason why we have to do an election.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm reading that also. This is Joyce, Arson, and Mathis. It just said places, but it didn't say time. I'm just trying to make sure, and I want the attorney to tell me, we won't get any challenges. That's where I'm going. That's the only place I'm going with this.
City Attorney?
And if we do get challenges, if we do get challenges, we are covered by law so that what we are doing is legal. That's the only place I'm going with this.
Okay, reply, city attorney?
I'm not going to say you're not going to get a challenge if the board makes this decision. We're in uncharted waters. This has never happened before. There's nothing that will show up in the A G opinions that will cover this particular instance. The A G opinion would strictly be an opinion that there's no precedent to look back and rely on in making this decision. So I can't tell you there won't be a challenge. There could be a challenge anyway. It's just like filing a lawsuit. You can't stop somebody from filing a lawsuit. I'm just, I'm giving you the opinion of the Attorney General. This is not my opinion. I'm relying on what the Attorney General representative expressed to me yesterday evening.
Okay, so, hold on. Hold on. I will get to you. The rationale for extending the election schedule. Dr. Muir, are you on the call?
I'm here. I'm here.
Okay. Based on your medical and professional opinion, is there a good justification to extend the election schedule for the city of Natchez? And if so, can you explain to the board why?
So, you know, we're working on what we know today with all this, with this spread of this virus, of course, and what we know today, and I know I gave you guys a few facts and numbers a couple days ago concerning Adams County compared to the state, and we are still, at this very timeframe, here in Natchez, on the trend upward towards our peak. And of course, the whole time, we've set flatten the curve, less and less in our peak. But we, the numbers bear out and bear significantly in the last two weeks that we are, we are moving our, we are developing cases in Adams County as fast or faster than most areas of the state of Mississippi. So others, other areas of state may be taking on this problem as well and thinking otherwise that they're not quite as busy. But we have seen our cases really go up, and for that reason, we can follow the models, and I know you guys are going to look at the latest University of Washington models, which are the prediction models that the government's using as well. They still have Mississippi as a whole predicted to peak somewhere around the twentieth. I will say, I have no idea how accurate that's going to be. I don't think anybody can say. That model changes every day. That's on what we know now data that comes in every day. But what it is right about is that we are leading up to that peak. We are going straight uphill, and all it takes in Natchez is an outbreak at a nursing home, which we have had. All it takes is an outbreak at a grocery store or supermarket, which we appear to have some of that going on. All it takes is those sort of occurrences to change this model on us and to extend out the time that we're going to be dealing with this. And once we get, even if we reach that peak on the twentieth, my concern, and the concern of most physicians, and trust me, it's me reading every single day, watching everything I can, reading everything I can, just like most of you are doing as well, and interpreting it from my standpoint. But that peak that reached is, if we can even plateau at that point, that would be the best case scenario next week, and plateau and see a slow decline. That decline is dependent, based on the model, is dependent on all of us continuing to follow the social distancing, remain in place guidelines for our community. If we lift that at any time between now and the end of May, then that model could change on us, and certainly the concerns are to have a respike, which has happened in history, in our history, in national history, with the Spanish flu of nineteen eighteen, with three spikes. So we know a lot more now than we did a hundred years ago, but the concerns are the same, is that if we lessen up and start doing things that are more normal in the next month, then we may see some problems, and any outbreak would be a real trouble for us in town. Like I mentioned, Tuesday, the hospital is in great shape, is prepared, but no hospital, no hospital anywhere in a small community is prepared for an outbreak where a dozen nursing home patients become sick, or a bunch of folks at a large store become sick. And that's the sort of stuff we can't handle. That's why we have to keep the process going. So to answer the question about May twelfth, that May twelfth is still under that, is still within that curve. If we do everything right, the model has us really floating that across that, and it's flattening out significantly more towards the end of May as well. And so it's sort of counterintuitive for me as a physician, just to say that we're referring, stay, we're sort of stay-at-home measures, at least until the thirtieth, and we don't want to put our high-risk, comorbid-conditioned patients out on the street. And look, I talked to, we probably reach outreach to a hundred patients a day through our clinics, and they're all staying at home, they're all trying to do the right thing, and they're listening. And I think our community is finally listening, and it took them a while, really only in the last week and a half that I feel like, if you, you may notice this too, you're going to grocery stores, you're going into the drugstore where it may be, and people are wearing masks, and their social distancing is much better. And this is the way that we're going to see that curve flatten that much faster. Having said all that, my opinion that May twelfth may be too early because it doesn't fit into that model, but that model can change. But we want it to change for the best. We want it to flatten earlier. We're not, right now, we have to maintain that, the process we're doing to get there.
Okay, Dr. Muir, thank you. Who is this? Who is this?
Philip West. I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask a question.
Okay, to Dr. Muir?
Well, actually, to, in general, perhaps to Dr. Muir and others who are listening.
Okay, I will allow it. Go ahead, Mr. West.
Okay, thank you. First of all, let me say I'm asking a question, you know, not only as a taxpayer and the relevance of the Constitution as it relates to our foundation of the electoral process. Secondly, I want to know what would be, what's being proposed, what are the dates that are being proposed in terms of the change from what you all have already recommended or voted to accept? And I also want to know, through Dr. Muir and others who are present, we know that we have a presidential election coming up in November, presidential congressional and senatorial elections, which the Constitution requires, and I would not anticipate that there would be any major effort to not have that election. What happens if in fact there's a date change from whatever you all have already decided on to another date, and that particular future date, they still either remain the same, may be even worse, are you saying then it should be rescheduled for another time? Keeping in mind that the federal elections, again, for the congressional seat, the senatorial election for the senatorial seat, and the presidential election will definitely be held in November, unless somebody knows something that I don't know.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. West. City Attorney, if you don't mind, will you talk about the proposed dates that's on the resolution?
Okay, the primaries today, we've moved it from April the seventh to May the twelfth. Now the primary elections will be moved from May the twelfth to June the second, and the runoff will be June the twenty-third, with the general election being July the fourteenth, and the candidates taking office August the first.
Okay, Dr. Muir, if you were to respond to Mr. West's question as relate to, you know, the pandemic and, you know, as time goes by, what happens there, if you don't mind?
Well, sure. What I guess what I'll say, and to finish that, we talked about the model, is the reason June first, and I'm just hearing this dates that we just heard, June first would make more sense based on the model. Because if y'all look at the model, if we continue to practice what we're doing and do it really well, and keep our foot on the gas, and really encourage our community, by June first, we're supposed to be flat. We're supposed to be at a point in Mississippi, and hopefully here in Adams County, that we're not having daily cases or daily deaths in our state, and that would be, that's our goal. We hope that also, we're not sure, but we think that by that time, because of the heat of the summer will be upon us, that we are sure hopeful that this virus acts like similar viruses in the past, and even in its own category and family, that it will, it'll fatten up and slow down and become more dormant for us, if not completely die off, and give us an opportunity to recover and put in our mitigation strategies to bring our businesses back and get back to some normalcy. But that date makes a lot of sense. As to the rest of the year and to the national elections, that's certainly something that I'm not going to be able to look ahead and make real comment on, other than, I think if we do everything right now, we'll be on target. We're not talking about putting these, if you're talking, if you guys are talking about putting this off just a few weeks, then I think that's a very reasonable goal, and there could be some very significant improvement in our situation during that timeframe.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Muir.
Mr. Mayor, let me just say this. I don't want everybody, I don't, let me just say this.
Go ahead.
I don't want anybody to misunderstand me, because I understand the legitimacy of this particular discussion and the seriousness of it as it relates to what our circumstances are. I just know that hopefully Dr. Muir is correct, and it will be less of a situation, less of a pandemic, or whatever the case may be, in our area during this particular time, if it's rescheduled. But I also have been keeping up with what's going on from a national perspective, what the experts are saying, and some of them perhaps are predicting that this particular virus could go off into twenty twenty-one, and some are predicting perhaps even twenty twenty-two. And so, as, you know, so my concern is, if in fact that is the case, even if there's a vaccine that's found a year from now, or six months from now, whatever the case may be, just to have complete eradication of this particular pandemic in our particular community would take, you know, another year from now, whatever the case will be. In the meantime, I think what many people think is that there would have to be some mediation as it relates to trying to move forward and not have complete disruption, complete stay-at-home for the entirety of this particular period. And like, again, I'm hoping it's over in two months, or three months, or two weeks, or whatever the case may be, as I know most of you are, and all of us are, and we should take the necessary precaution to try and move forward, and I have no problem with that. But at the same time, I'm saying that there would probably not be a, everybody's free, there will be not a light switch that's turned on in November, and there will be an election in November, and we would have to do all we can as a community, as a board, so to speak, as the election commissioners, or whatever the case may be, to try and make sure that we do our election and our civic duty and uphold the Constitution in such a way that would limit the exposure to those persons, because we know that those kind of elections will still go on. So we cannot expect those elections to go on and not have the local elections to go on within a reasonable period of time. That's basically what I'm saying.
Right, right. And, and let me say this, and I totally agree, I pray that in the next thirty days or so, that we will have a major declination in this disease, and I also pray that the heat of the summer, just like with influenza and a whole lot of other adenoviruses, that it will actually help to suppress this coronavirus during the heat of the summer, where, you know, it will completely flatten out. And I'm optimistic that somewhere down the road, maybe in the next eight, nine months, that there will be an approved vaccine that will actually be the key in terms of the complete control of the coronavirus. But I totally agree, in November, when the presidential elections and congressional elections are taking place, even if this disease is still in existence, there's, at least there is this window of time in order for communities across this country to properly prepare aseptically for getting voters ready to safely go to the polls and be able to carry on their duties as voters of this country. So I totally agree in that respect. Alderwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I feel like we're hearing what is important for our community. We know that our numbers are still going up. Our primary responsibility as elected officials is the protection of our citizens. We've already, we've already adopted a resolution to extend our stay-at-home through the thirtieth. Changing it to the dates that are proposed follows this model and would work in that, and the governor, from my understanding, he's about to do the same thing to the twenty-seventh or thirtieth. I'm not sure which date it will be. I just propose to make the motion, we go ahead and extend the dates for the resolution as our attorney already gave out. It follows our model and will do the right thing for our citizens.
So that's your motion? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
And our second. Okay, it's been moved and second. Now the unreadiness. Alderman Frazier?
Before you made that motion, I really was trying to get on air. Everybody had their say, thought I'd been trying to get off, but no. Let me say this. I respect Dr. Muir's opinion and everything here, but he is saying here, I understand that we're in a pandemic and everything, but I would like to say to the rest of the board members, what is the difference in Natchez, Mississippi, and Wisconsin, who had an election, who have more people per square mile per capita than we do? So what is different? They had an election, so why we keep kicking this hand down the road? We have a charter that says that we can, we can go about and go on after this election. We have means in the state of Natchez whereby we can deal with Mr. Rafferty, and we can hold a general this election. We're sitting here kicking on down the curve. But like I say, this is, you can talk about this all day, and of course, talking about the curve, who knows? Like I say, the president's going to make an announcement today, and as I said earlier, they're going to open up the country, what they're going, he wants to do it by state. And if you do it by state, the board will lose pandemic and stuff. So that's a possibility that we might open up May the first, according to the president, and I'm quite sure if the president say open the country up May the first, that's what Governor Reeves don't do, because he don't do exactly what the president tells him to do. So I think we need to go on, have a selection, on May the twelfth, and get this over with, and send the city in, and go and get whoever go get in office, and we can go and take care of the city of Natchez, plan for the future. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Father and witness on the motion. Ms. Mathis?
Yeah, I'm asking about a couple of these dates that you have. Okay, June the twenty-third, and I mean, we changing everything else. Has anybody looked at the calendar and understands that that's the fourth Tuesday in June, which means that that's an election day? July, it's an election day if we adopt the schedule, but it's also a board meeting day. All right? July the fourteenth is the second Tuesday in July. That's an election day that we are proposing, but it's also a board date. And the last thing I'm going to ask you is, once, if we have moved this, I was moved, that we passed this today, why are we waiting until August the first? Why is there that much difference after we get through with that general? Once, to me, that general gets certified, that, and it's a certified election, because August the first is a Saturday. I've never known us swearing anybody on a Saturday. I don't know whether that matters, but as soon as the election is completely certified, given there are no challenges to it, we, I think we need to go on and place those, place those people in office. So I'm questioning, the only reason I'm, now I want to make sure I'm saying this right, I'm making note, because I looked at the calendar, that June the twenty-third on my phone is the fourth Tuesday in June, so that you're going to have to change your meeting date. July the fourteenth, and I know everybody's saying, well, that's mine, well, we have all these businesses that we have to take care of, and then after the fourteenth, I do want to ask the attorney, so after June thirtieth, the attorney, anything that we have to take care of, even if it's a special call meeting, we can take care of it, given that we haven't been sworn in, that's a question. And I'm noting that July the fourteenth is the second Tuesday in Tuesday, and I'm asking about this Saturday swearing in on August the first, and if we could not look at swearing in people as soon as the election is completely certified. Thank you.
Okay. City Attorney, you want to respond?
Well, my response on the, on the swearing in is, I think the board, we could get sworn in on the Monday after the first, if the first falls on a weekend, even move the swearing in to the Monday after the weekend. As far as the ability of the members to conduct business, it's statutory that if a new board can't take office during the scheduled time under statute or the code charter, the board that's in place has the authority to continue to conduct business for the municipality until such time. The board that's in place has the authority to continue to conduct business for the municipality until such time as the new board is sworn in.
Okay, uh, further unreadness on the motion? If there be none, um, Alderwoman, how do you vote? Alderwoman Mathis?
I did have further unreadness. I was wondering if two weeks after the general takes place, which would be, uh, the, the fourteen, seven would be the, the twenty-first. And seven more would be the twenty-eighth. Could you not go ahead on and, 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 and be through with that and go on and, that, why would we carry it all the way over to August? That's what I'm saying. That was my follow-up question, but I couldn't get in.
Okay, um, city attorney?
I'm not exactly sure how much time it takes the election commission to certify the general election. I would guess Larry might could shed some light on that and. You know, if you wanted to have the board members sworn in before, uh, August first, I, I don't think that'd be a problem, but you certainly would have. That, that would ha- have to be certified before they could be sworn in. It would just give you the, enough time to make sure that, you know. All the, uh, folks have been tallied and certified and approved by the commission.
I guess I wanna yield it then to, to, to the commissioners to find out if, 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 how long does it normally take them to certify an election?
Okay, uh, Mr. Gardner?
It's taken me a while to get hold of this mic. Uh, under the law, we are allowed ten days from the election day to certify the results. In normal elections, and we've been doing this for a lot of years, unless there's something really unusual about it. We're usually certified within about the first five days. But we can only go ten days. We have to have it done. So by the twenty-fourth of July, we have to have it certified.
Thank you. That's, 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 that's a, that's a question about this August one and then the Monday after it's into the Saturday, and if it's certified in ten days. Can we look at that? Can we, uh, can we look at that? Do I need to make an amendment to back it up? Or what, what do you, what, what do I need to do? Since it will be certified?
I would think you'd been making amendments.
I, I'll make an amendment to back it up to the certification date.
Okay.
I'm trying to pull that, I'm trying to pull that calendar up.
Okay, uh, so there's a, a motion to amend the main motion, uh, and that is to back it up to the certification date?
If, if that's a.
Is that, is that what you're stating, Ms. Mathis?
Yeah, I'm trying to get in within the ten days. So, so if we do this on the fourteenth, ten days would be, trying to see. Seven days would be the twenty-first, the twenty-second would be eighth, the twenty-third would be ninth, the twenty-fourth would be ten, would be Friday, the twenty-fourth of July.
So would you like to make it July the twenty-seventh?
July the twenty-seventh would be what? A Monday? A Tuesday, a Monday. I, I'm not su- didn't we have a Friday, uh, what's our last swearing in on a Friday?
Mr. Mayor, I think it was.
I don't remember.
It was on a Friday. So if we did ten days, it would be the twenty-four.
I'm fine with amending my motion to that.
Okay, uh, so there's a, a motion to amend it, uh, to the July twenty-fourth, correct? Or twenty-seventh? I'm just trying to figure out which one.
July twenty-four.
Twenty-fourth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, Alderwoman Irving, uh, second the motion, uh, and that is to amend the main motion, unreadness on the amendment. Hearing none, how do you vote?
Have a question. I do have a question, mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead, uh, Alderwoman.
With us accepting these dates here for the election, will this shorten the length of our four-year period?
No.
Will it affect, though, the term date?
Uh, you're still, it's, it's still gonna be basically a four-year term, basically. Yeah.
I'm just asking, just want to clarify that. Okay.
Okay, further unreadness. Uh, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote on the amendment?
Aye.
Uh, Alderman Frazier, how do you vote on the amendment?
Well, with the board, Mr. Mayor, aye.
Okay, how do you vote? Alderwoman Smith on the amendment?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote on the amendment?
Aye.
Uh, Alderman Davis, how do you vote on the amendment?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote on the amendment?
Aye.
Okay, so the amendment has been unanimously approved. Therefore, the main motion has been amended. Uh, unreadness? If there be none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote? Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye. Is that on the, I thought I amended the original motion.
That's all, that, no, if there was a motion to amend the main motion, so we have amended the main motion. And now you're voting on the main motion, which has been amended. So how do you vote?
Mayor, I'm clear. I vote aye.
Okay, uh, Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, uh, the, uh, resolution has been adopted, uh. To those dates that have been changed. Uh, so at this time, I will entertain a motion for, uh, closed determination. And let me preface this, uh, to let the public know, uh, that now we are going to go into a closed determination period. You're welcome to stay on the meeting, uh, on the call here. The attorney will return. And give you the justification of why we're proceeding into an executive session, if it qualifies for the executive session. So at this time, uh, and, and let me ask this question, Dustin, uh, do all members have the call for the executive session?
I'm sure Pam will send it over now. It's.
Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion. Yes, yes, yes.
I, I did not. I didn't have either numbers to call.
Okay, we'll make sure that Pam gets that to you. Um.
Thank you.
A, a motion to proceed into a closed determination. So moved. It's been moved by, uh, Alderman Davis and second by Alderwoman Smith. Um, unreadness? If there be none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, uh, so therefore.
And I called Alderman Davis.
Uh, did I not call you? I'm sorry. Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, Alderman Davis. All right, so at this time, let's go ahead on, hang up from this call. Call into the executive session and Alderman Frazier, uh, make sure you had a call information so you can get on.
Mr. Mayor, we're all on a text that has the information on it. All of us.
Oh, it's, it's on a text? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Dustin?
Yep, go ahead, Bob.
Um, I just want to come back in. I, I left the executive session to, uh, to advise, uh, all the members that are present for, uh, this meeting. That the board has made a determination to go into executive session on the basis of a potential, uh, lease of property. And, uh, as soon as we finish discussing that matter, we'll come back to this meeting. Thank you.
Alderwoman Mathis, um, when we get ready to adjourn, will you offer the motion to adjourn in memory of, uh. Coach and former assistant principal George Smith?
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to. Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm not glad. I mean, I, I, I got things through me last night. I talked to May Ruth and to Darryl. And, um, so you know, well, you know, I worked with him and, uh, we used to, y'all think I fucking fight the child, but me and George and I used to fucking fight like old mayor. Couple, May Ruth laughed about that last night. And then Darryl, I told him, I said, I, I used to tease him, because you know at Zion Chapel, he would be the first person at the door.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would, I don't give a, I would tease him. I say, I hope they heard and let you come in and check. Not me, the first person welcoming up at the door. So we had an ongoing situation between us and, uh, I, I shared that with, with his wife last night. So yes, I would, I would, I would be honored to, to, to make the motion. Yeah.
Okay, uh, Alderman Davis, are you here? Alderman Davis, what happened to Ben? That's unusual.
I know, he usually logs into the computer and so.
And normally he's, he's the first one. But, uh, uh, Alderwoman Mathis has become a pro at this. I think she beats everybody now.
I got it.
Um, Sarah, did you reach out to Ben?
I did. I texted him, so we'll see.
Okay.
Hopefully he'll be getting on.
Uh, Dustin, uh, besides the board and city attorney, uh, do we have others, um, like the press and so forth on the call?
We have Ricky Gray, John Coffey, Jaclyn Williams, Valencia Hall, Jennifer Combs, uh, Sally Latham, Walter Tipton's on, Catherine Blink.
Okay, is that Ben?
Uh, Mayor, he said it won't let him in. It, it isn't locked, is it?
Uh, Dustin, will you, okay.
I wonder if he might be accidentally calling the executive number. Let me.
Yeah, yeah, he might be dialing the wrong one.
Sabrina Robertson is in.
Okay.
All I got.
All right. Well, to the audience that's, uh, present, we're waiting on Alderman Davis, uh, to return to open session. So bear with us a few minutes. Uh, he should be returning soon. Alderman Davis? Alderman Davis?
I'm here.
Okay, good. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you, uh, perform the roll call?
Yes, sir. Alderman Mathis?
Here.
Alderman Frazier?
Here.
Alderwoman Smith?
Here.
Alderwoman Irving?
Here.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman Dillard?
Here.
I'll praise the mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And of course, the city attorney is on the call. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over. To the city attorney to request some action, uh, from the board. Uh, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. Uh, I, I only two motions, um. Mr. Mayor, the first motion would be, uh, a motion to declare, uh, that portion of the property, city property. Known as, uh, Little Mexico, uh, that's adjacent to, uh, and actually the repairing lights to the Mississippi River. Uh, sufficient to locate a docking facility, uh, to be declared surplus property. So that the city, uh, can enter into, um, a potential lease agreement, uh, for a, a docking, uh, a docking facility.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a second? It's been moved by Alderwoman Mathis and second by Alderman Dillard, um, to, uh, comply with the request of the city attorney. In terms of, uh, deeming Little Mexico as surplus property, uh, unreadness on the motion? If there be none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alden, Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, uh, Mr. Attorney, Madam Clerk, uh, city attorney?
Uh, yes, sir. The next motion we'll need is, uh, for the board to approve the agreement to lease. Uh, an area to be determined, uh, as part of this Little Mexico for the docking facility that will be between Viking USA LLC. And the city of Natchez. That was presented to the board during the executive session.
Okay, you've heard the request. Uh, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Dillard, second by Alderman Davis, unreadness on the motion? Hearing none, Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote? Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk, Mr. Attorney, that's all we have, correct?
Uh, uh, that's all we have at this time, but I would like this for, uh, the, maybe the press to, uh, if they're go, would there be reporting on this? I wanna make sure it's a clear understanding. This is not an, it's not a lease agreement. It is not officially gonna be leasing any particular property at this particular time. This is an agreement to allow Viking to develop a proposal, develop specifications. And present of the, uh, uh, an area to lease as well as the docking facility that will be placed there. And then it'll be, uh, probably after the new board comes in, that an actual lease agreement will be voted on by the new board. Uh, the other aspect about this agreement that I want, uh, the press in particular to know is the agreement specifically says that. Any docking facility constructed by Viking would not interfere with the ferry streak landing. Uh, which is the landing where the old Lady Luck Casino was, so that other cruise vessels will still have access. To that landing like they've always had it. And that being said, uh, I think that's all we have.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Attorney. Uh, Alderwoman Mathis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, it is with a grave heart that I move, uh, the adjourning of this meeting in memory of Mr. George Smith. Who was, uh, a, a assistant principal at North Natchez High School and assistant principal at Natchez High School once we merged. And was one of the leading coaches in the state of Mississippi in terms of basketball championships. And he led North Natchez High School to at least two, uh, statewide championships. Uh, I worked with him from nineteen seventy-five. Until he retired and we kept in contact. So it's just with a grave heart that I move that we adjourn in his memory.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
It's been moved and second. This motion is not a debatable motion. Therefore, I will call further vote. Alderwoman Mathis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderman Frazier, how do you vote?
I feel that very hard, this mayor.
Alder, Alderwoman Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
Alderwoman Irving, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Davis, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Alderman Dillard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, the meeting has been adjourned. Thank you. God bless you and be safe.